I remain concerned about two levels of government, two different levels of government, engaged in a lawsuit, one level suing another level of government, and many other concerns that I have with this. But given the discussion in camera and given the reason I just mentioned with a threat of costs against the city, which could be a substantive amount in the event that we drop the lawsuit at this period of time, I'll reiterate that I am withdrawing the lawsuit at this point.
Thank you, and you're withdrawing? That's, Carolyn, you have that?
I'm withdrawing the lawsuit.
And we're not accepting any speaker? Oh, thank you. All right. Back to you, sir.
I'm withdrawing the lawsuit. We're withdrawing the motion. Okay, so that's, that item then, Carolyn's checking with you, that's dispensed with?
Yes.
Okay. Now, just to check, sorry, Counselor Clark, go ahead.
I had a motion. Did you want that now on the FOI item, or?
Well, just to check in with Carolyn, maybe if you don't mind for a second. There's another motion here that we spoke about, that I was going to move, which I could move now, or I could wait for Counselor Clark's motion. I think it may be appropriate in terms of sequence, because this was shared with Counsel or First, if that's okay with you, Counselor Clark. And the motion would read as follows: moved by myself and Second of my Counselor Whitehead. And it has to do with the legal fees to date associated with the Red Hill Valley Parkway suit. And it reads as follows: that the City of Hamilton publicly release all legal costs and disbursements associated with the Expressway lawsuit to date against the federal government of Canada, which amounts to the following: legal fees, $2,665, $313.
Two million?
Two million, essentially 2.6 million.
Right.
HST, $32,000, and then the court order that resulted from the Hamley decision payment to the feds of $309,000 for total costs, all in at this point, on this lawsuit, to the amount of $3 million. And just speaking to this briefly, we, the city, had received a Freedom of Information request asking for this information. And through a discussion with our legal department, with Janice, it's our understanding that we need to release that information through the FOI process, and that we felt her advice to us was that it would be better for us to release it through a motion, rather than going through the FOI process and responding to that, being forced to release it through the FOI process. So today, my motion is to release the information on how much we spent on the Red Hill lawsuit against the federal government to date. Again, the number's $3 million.
Thank you, and I'm giving the chair back to you. That's why I couldn't second it. And Counselor Clark would like to be a speaker.
On the motion, comments, Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. It was a bit of a surprise to hear that the IPC, the Information Privacy Commissioner, has had a recent ruling whereby municipalities, if they are in litigation on something and a request for the legal cost comes in, even though the litigation has not completed, we're supposed to hand over that information. I think if we were to talk to 12 lawyers, you'd get 12 lawyers stating that that severely undermines the City of Hamilton's position when they're in litigation by providing the amount of the costs. I am really struck by the IPC that after many years of arguing that the municipality can withhold the information until the conclusion of the litigation, and then at that particular point in time, they could hand out the exact costs, that that has now changed without any discussion with the municipalities. No discussions with AMO, no consultations with lawyers, just one adjudicator's decision, the IPC, has changed that precedent, so that we now have to comply with those rules. Mr. Chairman, I'm quite concerned about that. I will be speaking with our legal counsel about it. I think it really does handicap municipalities significantly from any other corporation in the province of Ontario. Municipalities are now being treated to rules that are completely different than anyone else. And in the courts, those decisions can really have significant ramifications on the outcome of litigation. So while it seems we have no choice but to agree to release the information, as you have in your motion, I think we still have some serious arguments to make with the IPC and perhaps the Attorney General for the province of Ontario, because this is not putting the City of Hamilton or any municipality in an equal playing ground before the courts. It now puts us behind an eight-ball proceeding with litigation. Thank you.
Counselor Whitehead.
Thank you. Well, this is great, because you'll see a stark contrast between positions. Certainly, my position is that these are taxpayers' dollars we're spending, and we have a common responsibility to ensure that we're open and transparent, is practical. We know strategically and tactically, when you pursue a lawsuit, that the budget and those kinds of things remain silent or confidential. For those reasons, you don't want to compromise and let, and show your hand to the other side. What this is, is about expenditures to date. So whether it was the Dawson case, or whatever particular chapter within this saga that we've entered into, there was dollars in disbursements and invoices. And those were paid out, and those particular chapters are concluded. So there's no impact on what has already transpired to date, because there's already decisions that were rendered. And to reflect the cost in those decisions being made is fair game. And I think that we have, again, a moral, ethical responsibility to ensure that our taxpayers know what we spend at the conclusion of each of these initiatives. So I certainly support what's here before us.
Thanks, Counselor Whitehead. Counselor Ferguson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I tend to vote against this motion. I have no trouble whatsoever in disclosing our costs at the end. But by volunteering this from counsel, it's giving, received, and probably a very good advantage to the other side, because it gives them information. We would love to know what they've spent, but it hasn't been disclosed so far, and our solicitor can't give us advice where they can. So to stand up here and just volunteer this information before the case is closed, I have serious issue with that. If they want to request it through FOI, fine, let them do it, but I'm not prepared to support volunteering this information until the case is finished.
Any other comments on this? Counselor Marula.
Just quickly, Mr. Deputy Mayor. You know, from a technical standpoint, I agree wholeheartedly with what Counselor Ferguson has said, but provincial legislation clearly outlines that through FOI, this information can be revealed and will be revealed, and it's always better to be proactive rather than reactive. And as a direct result, I strongly support this motion, as I did when I moved the original motion back in 2011. So the direct result, I look forward to this being made public. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Marula. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, I don't think that the Canadian government is going to be too afraid of how much money Hamilton's going to bring to the case. Plus, these are learned men that we have here, that they have there, and they can figure a ballpark roughly where we are and they are. And remember that beginning January 1st, all of us are now having to present our expenses as we begin to purchase things, spend our money. And that's available to the public online, so I think that's the spirit of this, is that, how much have you spent so far? And once again, I don't understand how the Canadian government would be afraid of how much Hamilton is going to bring to the case. Those are my comments.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Jackson.
Well, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I'll support this here, this disclosure, but let's see how open-minded the federal government is, and I'm counting on one of my colleagues, I believe Counselor Clark, who'll be putting a Freedom of Information motion forward to the federal government. And let's see if Fares Fair on both sides of the ledger, and hopefully a senior level of government won't behind, hide behind some possible excuse. So I'm really looking forward to seeing if the federal government will own up as well how much they have spent to date. So I'll support this here today with the hopeful supporting strongly an FOI request of the federal government's expenses, too. Thanks, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Counselor Clark, for a second.
Thank you. I just want to make sure it's clear to the public that we want those to have the information released at the appropriate time, and the appropriate time used to be at the conclusion of the litigation. And no, I'm not afraid of the municipality, our council, making the decision when that information should be released, because that was our authority. What I'm concerned about is now the IPC with one adjudicator, not the commissioner, one adjudicator making a decision that causes municipalities across the province of Ontario to now release that legal cost, year-to-date, any time during the litigation. And the federal government is not afraid of the City of Hamilton. They've never been afraid of the City of Hamilton. They'd like to know what we really mean by suing them. Are we really in for it? If we've only spent $100,000, then it was all politics and meant nothing. But if we're actually spending the amount of money that we see now, now the federal government actually knows that we mean business, that we are spending money to actually litigate this case, that it wasn't politics, but it was actually law. So there is a big difference, and it's not about them being afraid. They shouldn't know what we're spending, period. Let them be blind they're litigating with us. That's has been historically, for the last 100 years, the way it has been with municipalities. This is a dramatic change. With that, I'll let it go, but please come to me for the motion on the federal FOI.
Any other discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Counselor Ferguson? Counselor Ferguson's opposed. Okay, thanks. Well, we will now go to the other item we discussed, and Counselor Clark, please.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. It's moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Ferguson. Whereas the federal government to date have not released legal expenses on the Red Hill Creek litigation, whereas there is no instrument for members of parliament to secure the actual legal costs incurred on this litigation, therefore, the city council directs staff to file a federal Freedom of Information request for all legal costs to date on Hamilton versus Canada, the Red Hill litigation. I can speak just really briefly to it. This motion's unprecedented. You know, we have to, under provincial IPC, offer up what our expenditures are, but under the federal privacy law, the feds do not have to offer up those expenses. They can spend whatever they want, and there's no accountability, because the public will never see that information. They will also, and I've seen this provincially, they will argue that they can't break out their costs, because it's all a part of their overall Justice Department budget. At the end of the day, if, what I've just heard many of my colleagues say about open transparency, and this is a good thing for the citizens, then it should be a quid pro quo with the federal government. We should not be doing one thing, and they're sitting there hiding everything on their side. So I think it's important that we file this FOI. I think it's important that this council, all of us, support this, so that ultimately we get the information, and ultimately, the laws are the same federally and provincially.
Thanks, Counselor Clark. Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Carried. Any opposed? None opposed. Okay, just bringing committee back to our agenda. The other GIC item we had from last week that was carried over was a delegation request and a presentation from Scott Warren of Global Spectrum. We'll move in a moment to do that, but I wanted to, in conversation with Carolyn, and understanding that city staff are kind of waiting for the next step, which is a presentation of some of the budget material, and looking at the hour, 3:15, suspecting this next item may take a bit of time. We will not be requiring the budget presentation today, and Carolyn will be carrying forward. We have GICs over the next couple of days, and you'll work with staff to organize how those presentations come forward. Is that correct? Okay, so staff are released to not coming, Chris, this afternoon. So the next step, then, is to ask Counselor Marula, did you have a question?
Just a point of clarification. So we know what the item is, is to rename a Cops Coliseum, is that correct?
Yes.
I'm just wondering what the necessity for a presentation is outside of that.
The delegation request of Mr. Warren was approved by GIC, so we really need to fulfill that approval.
I get almost suspected.
I suspect there's some interest in this presentation, so Counselor Clark.
I was just going to suggest it'd be helpful if Carolyn handed out the motion that'll be attached, that will proceed, or followed, rather, the presentation by Global, that might be helpful. Thank you.
Okay. Well, let's now call Scott Warren. Scott, thanks for your patience. Global Spectrum to present to us.
I'm just going to borrow this.
Okay, excellent. Thank you so much. Good afternoon, Mr. Deputy Mayor, members of the committee, citizens, and staff. Well, I've met many of you individually. This is my first time in front of you collectively. And first, I want to express my gratitude. Over the past 10 months, Global Spectrum has been able to have significant impact, not only on the venues that we manage on your behalf, but on the staff that I lead, as well as the citizens in the community. The great relationship between Global Spectrum and the various departments within the city has made many of those achievements possible, and so I thank you. Being new to the protocol for meetings such as this, you may have noticed that I asked for this discussion to be in camera. The reason for that was not to hide information from the public, but rather give us an opportunity to have a proper unveiling of our partner at a press conference, should our initiative be approved. So I apologize for the confusion, and I'm happy to be before you today in a public session. As you know, the authorization to seek a naming rights partner is granted to us in our management agreement with the city. Since we manage these venues on the city's behalf, we have to be good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars. We have to be fiscally responsible. As these great venues continue to age, it will be important for us to have the resources, not only to maintain the infrastructure, but to invest in amenities that will create the best guest experience possible. The more money we can generate through corporate partners, the more taxpayers will benefit through the first-class experiences we can provide, and they deserve. With this in mind, I come before you to seek approval this afternoon. When we were going through the possibility, obviously, naming rights is important. It's an important revenue stream, like any other revenue stream, whether it's food and beverage, revenue streams, merchandise that's sold at concerts, ticket revenue, these sort of things. All of these streams are important for us as we look to create a healthy budget, and hopefully, at some point, also deliver additional dollars back to the city as part of revenue sharing. So when we started talking about naming rights, it was important for us to do a number of things. There were really sort of four key important factors, for me certainly, and for Global Spectrum, as related to naming rights. The partner had to be willing to honor Victor K. Cops. That was a must, that was from the beginning. I may be new to Hamilton, but I am certainly not ignorant to the history and what the family and what Victor in particular meant to the city. And so that had to be, that had to be something that we had to check off the list. The partner would be locally based, if possible. There are a number of folks out there that maybe we could have tried to go after, but for us, having a locally-based company was something that we felt strongly about, and because they would also understand the relationship to Victor K. Cops and the community. The partner had to be a true partner, not just a name on the venue. That was another point that was very important to us. We wanted someone that's not just a name on the venue, we wanted someone that was willing to help us move tickets, to help get people into the building, someone that we would be able to work with in their business, their line of business, and work together to really have the ability to cross-promote, if you will, where we can certainly give them advantages for all the people coming to our events, but how could they get people into our venues? And we had to seek the support from the Cops family. These were all critical points that fortunately, I will say, we were able to check off each of these and bring this particular sponsor to the table. I'll get back to that last point in a minute, if I can, the Cops family point. But first, what I'd like to do is transition over to Mr. Kelly McGiffin from First Ontario, who has been a strong partner of ours in the Bulldogs for years at the arena currently, and we just look to expand that relationship, and they've been an amazing partner to date, and we hope that you will allow them to be a bigger partner with us moving forward. Kelly?
Good afternoon, Mr. Deputy Mayor, members of the committee, citizens and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to present on the issue of the naming rights of Cops Coliseum. 25 years ago, we opened our doors in Hamilton as Stellco Employees Credit Union. Today, we share a proud history with many communities and represent nearly 100,000 member owners. We share this representation with you, as many of our members are your neighbors or the constituents that you represent. As a 37-year veteran in the credit union system, this is a proud day for me as president and CEO of First Ontario Credit Union, as it enables us to demonstrate the values that stand behind the credit union difference, and more importantly, the value of a partner such as First Ontario. Credit unions are driven by both economic and social concerns. They are community-based organizations that care not only about the bottom line of the business, but also the needs of our members and the quality of the life in our communities. We believe in Hamilton, and we want to contribute in a tangible way to its continued revitalization. Beyond the naming of the building, we feel that working with the city, Global Spectrum, and the Bulldogs to give back to the community is an integral part of this opportunity. First Ontario's had tremendous growth over the last six years. Our increase in members and their investment in the credit union is a testament to our strength and stability. Knowing the city's commitment to revitalizing Hamilton three years ago, we embarked on a strategy of expansion downtown and across the greater Hamilton area. Over this timeframe, we've opened four new branches, with a fifth open at Lime Ridge Mall this summer, bringing the total number of branches in Hamilton to 10. This fall, we'll be relocating our corporate office, still in the GHA, to Stony Creek, to a facility currently under construction that'll be facing the QEW. The expansion of new branches has also contributed to the growth in jobs. We've experienced over 60% growth in new jobs over the past six years, and in 2013, we were named a top 10 employer for Hamilton Niagara. We're also very proud of the variety of sponsorship and support we provide within Hamilton. In fact, our Blue Wave Employee Volunteer Program gave over 1,600 hours of service in our communities over the past two years. After 75 years, we understand the value of history in a city's evolution, and those people that have contributed to its cultivation over time. Our objective from the beginning with our discussions with Global has been to ensure that the Cops family and the Victor K. Cops name is respected, while still finding a balance between history and evolution. This time of change is an opportunity to educate those who don't know Victor Cops, revitalizing his legend, just as we are helping to revitalize our city. Thank you for the opportunity to present some background on why we believe First Ontario is a viable naming partner for Cops Coliseum, and we look forward to being a key contributor to this ambitious city. Thank you.
As I mentioned, one of the key things for me was to have a dialogue in some way with the Cops family. One of the first things I did is reached out to Sheila Cops, and she has been fantastic in our conversations. She understood what this was about, the reason for it. She was gracious. We talked a number of times when she was in Mexico, I think, recently, and we've continued to have the conversations and the dialogue all along. One of the things that she did is she provided a letter for me to read here today, that I'd like to take a moment, if I may. Sheila said, "The City of Hamilton is experiencing tremendous and exciting change, and I'm proud of the contribution my father has made to this great city. I understand the expense of maintaining a prominent sports and entertainment facility, and I am pleased that the Hamilton-based, community-owned credit union is committed to carrying on the legacy of my father along with their brand. I am open to this partnership between Global Spectrum and First Ontario, because both organizations are committed to the growth and revitalization of Hamilton, just as my father was. I acknowledge the importance of the naming rights agreement to maintain the city-owned facility, and I truly hope that the City of Hamilton will continue to show its dedication to the legacy of my father by looking for additional opportunities to honor the Victor K. Cops name." When we talk about that, in terms of how are we going to honor Victor K. Cops, what does that mean? And we tossed it around quite a bit in terms of how to do that. One of the things that we'd like to do, there are really two components to that. The first component is on signage on the venue itself. So the venue itself would be called the First Ontario Center, and then it would say, "In honor of Victor K. Cops." And that would be in three locations on the outside of the venue. In addition to that, Sheila had mentioned to me the passion that her father had for hockey, and so we felt it appropriate to also name the rink in his honor. And at Center Ice, around the Bulldogs logo at Center Ice, it will say, "The Victor K. Cops Rink." And she was thrilled that we would be able to connect his passion for hockey and doing that as well. As I said, she's been fantastic throughout the process. And we could, I think we can show what that rendering might look like. Again, this is just a rendering, and it may be difficult for everyone to see. But we would make sure that he was honored, and this is probably, quite frankly, I mean, again, this is a mock-up. The lettering itself would probably be in perhaps a brushed nickel, something like that. We can get into those details, but the importance of that is that even though this relationship, if this relationship were to go away at some point, that doesn't, right? So whatever the name is on the building, Victor K. Cops name will always be on the venue as long as the city wishes it to be so, because we certainly wish it to be so. Same as the Center Ice. The Center Ice logo is not something that we are selling in any way. Obviously, First Ontario Center would be around the Center Ice, as they are in any venue that you see, but we don't sell the inside of that. And so we want to make sure that that also stays for good in the venue. And there's certainly, we feel like, based on those two things in our conversation with Sheila, that they were very pleased with that and gave the support for us to move forward. It certainly concludes our piece. I know I thought I was told I only had about five minutes, so I didn't want to go too long, but I certainly am willing to answer questions if you may have some.
Thanks very much, Scott. And we have following speakers list: Counselor Farr, Counselor Collins, Counselor Ferguson, and Counselor Johnson. First, Counselor Farr.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and thank you to Global Spectrum, Scott, and thank you to First Ontario, not just for today's presentation, but obviously already showing signs of a terrific partnership and two great devoted community entities, corporations, if you will, who are working very hard at, number one, honoring Victor's name. And certainly, Mr. Deputy Mayor, in addition to that, with the two-part motion that we've put together here, I'll move and seconded by Counselor Pearson, we will hopefully look to as well, once we get to it, as a council, add-on to honoring Victor's name elsewhere. So just on the questions, because I believe comments will be later, but questions through you to Scott. Number one, I can't remember when, but I dragged out this old slideshow from when you guys first, and you weren't even here, I don't think, then, Scott, but-
Not in the very beginning, no.
-Global Spectrum and Live Nation presented Mr. Deputy Mayor to us, and I don't remember the page, but possible ways to reduce the subsidy was the slide, and this was long ago when Counselor Marula moved that we looked towards finding somebody to manage our three entities. And one of the possible ways was to reduce the subsidy, possible naming rights for Cops Coliseum. So you're really just playing out on what you presented to us in the first place, and this exercise is part of our agreement. this exercise is part of our agreement, right, through you?
Yeah, that's absolutely right. I mean, I think there are a number of ways that we reduce that subsidy. I mean, of course, as you know, there's a guarantee reduction to the taxpayer when we came in. We guaranteed anywhere from $400,000 to $500,000, depending on what year you compare to. That's guaranteed and we're at risk for that. If we only reduce the subsidy by 200, we're responsible with Global Spectrum and it comes out of our pocket for the rest, right? So it's important for us to do all that we can to not only reduce or honor that guarantee of that reduction, but also how do we put more money into the bottom line? Because as you may know, there is a point at which if our numbers are strong enough and everything comes through, that we actually end up sharing money with the city. This allows us to get closer to that point. And so hopefully that's where we're all going. We're going to honor the guarantee of taxpayer reduction that we promised and then also hopefully get to a point where we're actually giving them money, giving the city money at some point.
Right, 70/30 if I'm not mistaken.
Correct.
You're the 70.
Correct.
So Scott, you and I were together on a few correspondences to Sheila and you mentioned you read off what Sheila had written. My office was part of that and I also had an opportunity to catch up with Sheila to a great extent with a couple of phone calls prior to this. And one of the things early on in this process, in fact, I think the first thing we talked about sitting with John Hurtel after a meeting several months ago was let's engage the COPS family as soon as possible.
Absolutely.
And you did that and I admire that you did that. And then eventually I caught up with Sheila well after you did. And again, we had a great catch-up, but we've talked specifically to this. And the correspondence that I have that you're on, basically she states that there's really just one member of the COPS family that's opposed. Can you agree with that here for the record today through you?
Yes, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, that is correct. That is what I understood as well, that she had indicated that there was one family member not in favor, but there was strong support.
So with the sister opposed specifically and Sheila COPS, the former Deputy Prime Minister, among other things, representing this great community, did say we could bring this up for the record. So with that, we're unable to get a full endorsement letter unfortunately from the COPS family with one sister opposed. So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, true, Scott, that was the reason for that?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, that is correct, yes.
Okay. And I think I'll just have some comments, I'll ask some questions and just to once again reiterate, so far, so great as far as Global Spectrum and their work, at least as far as this downtown councilor has seen and certainly with First Ontario. I'm glad they put the slide up that indicates the 600K because I don't know of any events that I haven't been to where they in some way or other haven't been part of, particularly things like open streets and others since locating here in downtown Hamilton and likely even before. So I think we've got two great partners here, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thanks, Counselor Farr. We are just, I should have reiterated earlier, we're just asking questions of Scott at this point. We'll get to your motion, Counselor Farr, later on. Counselor Collins.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, and I have a couple of questions through you to Scott. Scott, I don't think anyone's surprised that the naming rights is in front of us because as was previously mentioned, it was one of the carrots that we offered to the private sector in terms of operating the facilities. And so it shouldn't come as a surprise that you're in front of us here today with what looks like a good opportunity for the city to get to a point of profitability, as you mentioned earlier. I think there will be a lot of questions though in the community in terms of how much the naming rights are worth and how those revenue streams are split based on the agreement that we have. So I don't know if the question is appropriate for Scott or for our own staff. Is there an opportunity for us to publicly disclose how that is distributed?
Scott, do you want to start and John Hurtel is here as well?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. The split is, it's not that it's confusing, but-
Based on our agreement?
But based on the agreement, there is a point in which, basically what happens is the money that we retain, Global Spectrum retains, there's also a split with the hockey team with the Bulldogs. So out of our portion of that that goes toward the bottom line, and really what that does is assuming everything else that we budget goes according to plan, those dollars from this agreement go into the bottom line and help us get closer to that profitability split of that 70/30 after a certain point. And I don't know how much of that we want to get into, but that is, you know, and the initial thing to keep in mind is that there are also a lot of costs that are associated with this as well for us. So the changing of the signage on the venue and those sort of things, obviously there's a cost that will come out of the dollars that are initially, that come in. So really the split comes ideally when the money from this deal goes into the pot and then that pushes us, just gets the water to that level where we then start splitting profit sharing at that point. I don't know if that quite answers it, but because it's somewhat vague answer, not purposely, it's just I don't know how much detail we wanted to get into in this particular session.
Well, I guess the public, most importantly, wants to know, I guess, how close we are to profitability. I mean, everyone's anxious certainly to capture the savings that you identified immediately and that was a guarantee, as you mentioned earlier. So the fact that we're saving money with your portion of the HEQFII deal, knowing that we have another portion with the Convention Center, the fact we're closer to a profit-sharing arrangement, I think, is good news for everyone. And I think the natural question would be, well, how close are we to the finish line in terms of getting to a point where we are sharing funds rather than just looking at a reduced subsidy?
Sure. Well, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, we are actually budgeting for money to come back to the city in this fiscal year. Again, it may not be a windfall of money, but the anticipation is, and with the lineup that perhaps you've seen of events that are coming through the venues, all of those things add up to getting us there. We believe we're going to see profit sharing this year. That's our anticipation.
Great. One small fly in the ointment, I guess, is that we have a management agreement with Global Spectrum for five years and the proposed naming rights are going to flow over a period of 10 years. And so I'm interested to know how that, I guess, transpires in light of the fact that we have a legal agreement and we're essentially tweaking that agreement to make this happen, which I don't have a problem with, but is there an opportunity for us to look at additional revenue streams for the city in light of the fact that we are essentially extending the revenue, sorry, the management agreement? Have you had discussions with our staff along those lines in that regard?
Yes, through Mr. Deputy Mayor, one of the key things for us was to make sure that we got any, again, nothing's been agreed to between Global Spectrum and First Ontario at this point in terms of a legally binding agreement. We wanted to make sure that that agreement got in front of the city's legal council. So the city's legal council has reviewed that and the, for us, the mindset, knowing that we, I mean, we hope to be here much longer than five years, but initially that's the agreement. And so we would make sure that that is transferable back to the city or to whoever would come in, if anyone, to manage the venue so that when we're gone, it remains with the city or whoever's in management.
Okay. Is there an opportunity to ask, Mr. Chairman, our staff for something, for questions along those lines or would you prefer to wait till later?
I think we'll prefer to wait, ask Scott to sit down at some point and we'll follow up with the staff and the motion.
If you could put me back on the list then?
Certainly.
If there's any questions I have, Scott, thanks for those answers.
Thanks, and Counselor Ferguson is next.
Thank you. And Counselor Collins, I are like-minded. Those are the exact two questions I had. First of all, you know, put a value up, but it sounds like it's either confidential because you didn't answer the question, Scott, or you haven't cut the deal yet.
No.
Trying to get a feel whether we're okay to change the name, is that the purpose of today's meeting?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, the deal itself is, it would be public record anyway. So for this conversation, it's 3.5 million over 10 years.
Okay. Is that net or after your cost of changes signing or is that gross?
That's gross.
Okay, so you've still got to deduct off that the cost of changing the names.
Correct. And there's also a commission for the sales team that does the, secures the sponsorship and those sort of things. So there are some dollars that would come out of that, but that is gross.
Would the net number be somewhere around 3 million then?
Approximately, I would think that that would be fair.
300,000 per year. And you're saying that we would simply, through you, Mr. Chairman, assign, you know, we are happy with what you're doing, but I think we have to put it through a public process again in five years and if someone else wins it, you would agree to the language of staff that it would be assignable back to the city, which we could then assign over to another successful proponent, if there is one.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, that's absolutely correct. I mean, it's not something that we would hold on to. This is really, we manage the venues on the city's behalf, so this is all city dollars in our minds.
Okay. And I think it is a great name. I love it. I think it's far better than Air Canada, First Ontario, you know, that fits very well. I think we all knew the naming rights were coming. Okay, I think that's all my questions this time. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Ferguson. Counselor Johnson?
Thank you. My questions have been answered. I'd like to go on the comment list though, please.
Okay, we'll come back to you later on for that. Counselor Whitehead.
Yeah, I'm having some difficulties to understand exactly why we're here. I think the first stage before we can embark in, the balance of the deal is just to give you the green light, because I think there's somewhere in the agreement that you had to bring this up to council for file approval. So from that perspective, with the COPS signature and support and the fact that we identified the low-hanging fruit, and I want to emphasize this, low-hanging fruit, putting naming rights on the facility, you know, I don't have a problem with that. I guess I'm more concerned about the implementation, how it's shown on the books, what contribution does the taxpayer see with this particular, I'm not talking about the rest of the operation, how does this flow through to the benefit of the taxpayers? I want to see that reflected in some form or fashion. This is probably not the venue to do that, but I'm just going to let you know what my concerns are. The other concern I have is, I guess the first question I have, and First Ontario is a great brand, so I want to make it absolutely clear. There's no question that, you know, if I was looking at good brands, First Ontario would be a good brand. $300,000 a year, well, I mean, I don't know how and what assessments was done in regards to what the value of naming rights on COPS Coliseum was. We certainly know what we're getting for Tim Hortons at the new football stadium. So I guess my concern is, or my first question is, did we shop this around or was because the ongoing relationship with First Ontario through the Bulldogs, this was a natural fit?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, we absolutely did our homework on this. We have a company that works internally called Front Row Marketing that oversees this for venues both across North America as well as Canada. And they do our evaluations for us and to see what makes sense in terms of the amount of events we get, the number of attendance that we get, all of these things sort of factor into what would that number really be legitimately. It just so happened that it was a great partnership that had already been established with First Ontario and they were willing certainly and anxious to come to the table to do the naming rights deal and be part of the community in that way. So it wasn't like we had a number of companies ready to go with this with their checkbook, but we certainly did the due diligence and the homework to figure out what the valuation should be and fortunately, First Ontario was able to meet that.
So how did you market the naming rights? Could I help understand the process you embarked on to see the corporate interest?
Well, I would have to, to honest, I would have to bring in the First Ontario folks because they actually do this on our behalf. So I would have to ask them who they went to and what information they got and those sort of things.
I think you missed a statement. What did Global Spectrum do in looking at corporate interest in the naming rights of COPS Coliseum? What was your process? Other than the assessment of value, what did you do to go and advertise the opportunity?
Well, really it's through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, really what we do is we talk with the various companies in the market. We knew that there was a recent deal in St. Catherine's with another credit union. Actually, I forget which one that was. Yeah, it's irrelevant. I really don't know. And looked at other partners here, but again, I'd have to bring in Front Row to be able to really explain sort of who they went after, who they talked to, because I was not part of those conversations. It's really the company that does that. It's not done through my office in particular.
Would you suggest it was a robust process that you embarked on to find a corporation that was interested in spending money on naming rights at COPS Coliseum? Or would you suggest it was sort of a narrow ask and interest was shown and you gravitated to that interest?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I would say that there were at least, to my knowledge, at least four companies that we talked to prior to First Ontario. It's not a wide swath, but again, there aren't a lot of companies that are able to be in this arena anyway in terms of this naming rights business. So there were a number of people that we talked to that we presented naming rights to, but quite frankly, this was the best fit in our minds.
Appreciate it. I don't question the fit at all. I just want to know, so I'm comfortable to go to people asking me questions, that Global Spectrum wasn't inside track for First Ontario because they were already there, but they did a robust, a comprehensive search to find a good fit and good value for the naming rights? And that's the questions I'll be at.
And through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, it's not like an RFP went out necessarily, that sort of, it's not a broad thing that went out, but there were certainly companies that we felt had the opportunity or the possibility to come to the table with this sort of package and we reached out to them. There were a few certainly.
Did I hear you say that the Bulldogs get a share of the revenue generated from this naming rights?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, that's true. But that's true with any of the revenue that we get as part of the agreement between the management and the Bulldogs themselves. So whether it's naming rights or whether it is new signage in the building that we could be, that wasn't sold previously historically, that's a partnership that we have together just as we share in some of their revenues as well.
And I appreciate, I think I need to ask staff, because this is new to me, that the naming rights was in the context of Global Spectrum or any other management group managing the COPS Coliseum. It's a COPS Coliseum as a city asset. It's not owned by Global Spectrum. And so now I'm trying to understand how something simple as naming rights, which was something that we empowered the management to pursue and get, is now being dipped into by the Bulldogs. So couldn't somebody provide some clarity on that from staff?
We'll come back to staff in a moment, Counselor Whitehead. I'll put you on the list to ask that question. Scott, are you finished with your answer on that question from your perspective?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We'll come back, Counselor Whitehead, on that.
My last question then is, understanding that there are provisions within your agreement relative to the opportunity or the chance for an NHL team to come to the city of Hamilton, understanding that the current state of the COPS Coliseum would need some significant investment, understanding that naming rights is part of that generation and of course, if there's an NHL opportunity, that value of naming rights would skyrocket. What is written in this agreement relative to the terms to ensure that this doesn't preclude that opportunity?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, that's one of the things that the city's legal council recommended in terms of putting language into the agreement. In case the NHL team, there would be a revaluation of the dollars, of the value in that. So right now, there isn't an agreement per se that's already done, but the city certainly is having their input and that is part of the input that they've given us in terms of the things that they would like to see in the agreement.
Okay, appreciate it. Those are my questions. So, Mr. Chairman, then, so on some of these other procedural type questions and the dollars and so forth, is there an opportunity to ask staff then or is this a different meeting?
Sorry, say it again.
So I've had some questions about these flow-throughs to the Bulldogs and I need some just clarity on that.
Just looking over at John, is that a question you can entertain a bit later? Okay. So we'll get to John on that one. Counselor Clark, please.
So I'm trying to remember back to the agreement and I'm going to paraphrase. We've given you the authority to come up with the naming rights and negotiate that type of agreement and for all intents and purposes, the city has approval, but the city can't unreasonably withhold that approval. Is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, that is correct.
That's the end of where our responsibilities lie as a municipality, because if we had concerns about anything else, we should have asked those questions and put it into the agreement before we signed the agreement. That's, I'm just rhetorically editorializing. Mr. Chairman, I just want to take this opportunity to thank First Ontario as well as Global Spectrum for understanding the sensitivities of a community that still holds Victor COPS in high esteem. I think you have done a yeoman's job of finding that compromise where we do not forget the honoree, but we still honor them in the building itself and in the name on the structure. That is not always done on fundraising naming rights. I've experienced it many times in my lifetime. It's always a challenge to get the new benefactor to understand that the old benefactor or the old honoree- understand that the old benefactor or the old honoree needs to be respected. And I think it goes a long way to the fact that First Ontario is not a giant corporate entity per se, but was really birthed out of the City of Hamilton, out of the residents in Hamilton, out of the community, and that has maintained in your, and you can see it in your corporate mandate and philosophies, and it shows very clearly here. So really, personal congratulations and thanks for making something that could have been very controversial in the community much more simpler simply by respecting past history. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councillor Clark. So at this point, I'd like to have a motion received the presentation. Sorry, was there another speaker? No? Yeah, we'll come back to comments and the motion for Councillor Farr in a moment. Move to receive, Councillor Clark, Councillor Johnson, all in favor? Carried. Thanks very much, Scott. Yep, I've got two on the list. Thanks very much for coming this afternoon. Appreciate it very much.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thanks, Kelly. So at this point, I think we'll start with Councillor Farr to put the motion on the floor, and then there's a number of speakers, questions for staff and others. I've got you, Councillor Whitehead. Councillor Farr?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Naming rights at COPs Coliseum, the motion's entitled. It's moved by myself and seconded by Councillor Pearson. It's a two-part motion. A, that Global Spectrum's recommendation as permitted within the management agreement between the City of Hamilton and Global Spectrum to grant naming rights at COPs Coliseum, to First Ontario Credit Union, a proven community partner and the largest financial institution with their head office in Hamilton, be approved, and B, that the Faculty Naming Subcommittee be directed to investigate additional naming opportunities, to permanently recognize the contributions made by Victor Kennedy Kops to the City of Hamilton, and report back to the General Issues Committee by, and the only area of the motion I don't have is a date, and I thought maybe that committee could together come up with one. It depends as well on the agenda of our City of Hamilton Faculty Naming Subcommittee as well.
Okay.
To speak to it briefly, we don't need to reiterate, it's clear, both of these corporations locally have a commitment to our community. Global Spectrum said in the presentation they were looking for a quote-unquote "a true partner." I think we can agree, hopefully all of us, that they found one with First Ontario, both as well as our previous speaker had stated. Understand and appreciate the significance of Victor Kennedy Kops, the World War II vet, the Timmins reporter, and one of our most memorable mayors in the history of the City of Hamilton, to be sure, and one who is associated quite obviously to a very important family in the history of our great city as well. So with that, on A, basically, we're saying this is the deal anyway, and on B, in addition to the respect that both First Ontario and Global Spectrum, Mr. Deputy Mayor, are showing Victor K. Kops, and by extension, the Kops family and those who feel in this community, the many, the importance of maintaining the name on the facade and now around the face-off circle, that we do our part in addition to that as a council, and send this off to our Faculty Naming Subcommittee. I can see one of my colleagues has already tweeted an interesting idea to that end. I won't mention who, but it's already a cause for a good debate in our community, and I'm sure we'll have suggestions from all over the place, given the significance of Victor K. Kops. So thank you for that.
Thanks, Councillor Farr. Just maybe I'll go to, if you don't mind, committee, go to Councillor Pearson now as a seconder, and there was the question at the end of Part B, Facility Naming Subcommittee. Councillor Pearson, you chair that committee.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and I appreciate that, and certainly the opportunity to second this motion. Actually, Facility Naming Subcommittee will be meeting on Monday, February the 3rd. It is generally a call of the chair, so I would suggest, and I would certainly push, to have something come back to GIC for April. With that, I wouldn't have a problem with the month of April in there, and certainly support this going forward. Congratulations and thank you to First Ontario, but also for recognizing the beloved mayor of the city, past mayor and very respected citizen, and I'm sure there'll be a lot of suggestions coming forward for their opportunities in naming. Thank you.
So, Councillor Pearson, just to catch that, we'll insert April in Part B in the open area there of the motion. I've got the following speakers then, Councillor Collins, Councillor Johnson, Councillor Whitehead, and Councillor Jackson. Councillor Collins.
I had asked earlier, I was going to ask, how does the current contribution from First Ontario then change the budget scenario for us in light of the contract that we have signed? Certainly, the theme has been it gets us closer to profitability, and I'm wondering through you, Mr. Zagerk, how that will impact this year's budget, and maybe if you can give us an idea as to where we sit with the whole contractual arrangement as well.
Start with you, Mike, and John's here to help us out as well. Mike?
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I believe there was two parts to that question. With respect to that overall HECCFY budget, and I think that was one part of the question, part of my presentation that I intended on presenting today, but will be presenting on Wednesday, will identify a forecast savings related to HECCFY in 2014 of just over $1 million. We budget about 2.8, and that will drop to about 1.8 for 2014. With respect to the revenue sharing, the presenter identified the fact that once the management fee threshold is achieved, the revenue sharing amounts to 70/30, 70% accruing to the municipality, 30 to global. We would report back with any revenue sharing in 2014, and it would be appropriate to consider one-time or capital until that is sustained.
Okay, and, all right, on the budget, I guess those are the questions I have. Just in general, I think we all knew that the date would come through the course of this contract, that there'd be some kind of a proposal that sought to rename the facility, and I'm certainly pleased, obviously, with the fact that we're dealing with First Ontario Credit Union. They have, as was mentioned earlier, a longstanding history and a great track record in our community in terms of their employment and everything they've done with corporate entities locally. So I'm quite pleased with that, and I'm very pleased, most importantly, that we'll continue to have some presence of Mr. Kops's name on the building. We all know the contributions that he made to our city, and I think it's vitally important that it remain not just on this building, but we possibly look at other opportunities within the municipality, prominent opportunities, to display his name and ensure that his legacy lives on. So pleased to see that staff are already working on that, and to note that Councillor Farr has that included in the motion. And with that said, I just want to thank everyone who's come forward with the information today, because I think it's one great big positive step forward.
Great, thanks, Councillor Collins. Councillor Johnson?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And there are more comments, no questions. They were already asked ahead of time. Scott, great job. We set you out for a job, you came back, and you're starting to fulfill it, and I'm really going to be excited to see those positive numbers rather than the negative. So Jennifer, your assistant's great to work with as well, so it's been a pleasure. And also, I really appreciate your sensitivity to the former mayor Kops and the family. I think that you've gone beyond and beyond for that, and I think that's wonderful. Mr. McGiffen, thank you. Thank you for coming back and continue to support Hamiltonians. Anyone who has lived through a Stelco strike, as my family did in 1981, Stelco Credit Union was the best to deal with, and they were the best supporters. So it's wonderful that you're going to continue that tradition forward. I want to take this time to welcome you to Word 11 for your newest addition, and I'm looking forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thanks, Councillor Johnson, and the next speaker is Councillor Whitehead.
Can I just ask, in our agreements, because I was pretty comfortable that we covered off the NHL piece and whatever intent, so I think Councillor Clark suggested that we should have made sure that the wording on that was there. Well, in fact, I pushed for that wording, and it is there. So I'm very comfortable, and I think I heard an answer on the NHL potential implications that is covered off in this, will be covered off in this agreement, so I'm happy about that. The piece I asked about, which wasn't clear in regards to our agreement, it appears to me, and this has maybe got me a little concerned in regards to, and I guess we can't fix it for five years, is that we take the naming rights, we would expect that the direct benefit would be given to both, obviously, Global Spectrum and the taxpayers of this community, and yet somehow, the Bulldogs are getting a share of that. I don't think it was ever contemplated that the Bulldogs would be a benefactor of the naming rights on COPs Coliseum. So can you help me understand what in agreement allows that to happen?
Yes, that, excuse me, and through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I think in my own assessment of it, Councillor Whitehead, where mine went was to back up to the larger deal in total. And I speak with the Global Spectrum folks probably at least three times a week, and the Bulldogs, so everything has been very transparent to me in terms of how they have proceeded. When you go back to why the Global Spectrum folks felt it would be worthwhile to do business here in Hamilton, one of the key factors was to have an anchor tenant that was a professional sports team. And what that allows them to build upon is a relationship that's integrated across a number of different revenue-sharing opportunities. So when Global Spectrum came on the scene and approached the Bulldogs in terms of the agreement between them, it was looking at it very differently than we had looked at it in the past as far as, I'll say, the division of responsibilities and revenues. And they kind of threw it all on the table and said, what could we do to bring our corporate resources to bear that would help both of us? They have staff, for example, that are assisting the Bulldogs, excuse me, in their sales efforts, as opposed to the Bulldogs being, I'll say, out on their own trying to sell tickets. They have been jointly working on sponsorship programs inside and outside the physical venue to, again, revenue share to grow both their businesses. As an example, in the former relationship, the Bulldogs would have access, 100% access to new or to any advertising sponsorships on the inside of the building only. But there was never any additional assistance brought to them. So again, without going into the details of their contract, one of the really great things about the size and scope and scale of Global Spectrum is that they've been working closely with the Bulldogs on all incremental revenues. So, you know, they kind of drew a line and said, well, here's where you are today. If we help you, let's, you know, work out a formula to sharing those revenues. All that to say is that the revenue-sharing deal that they have together is a very different deal that we had in place in the past, and therefore, it made a lot of sense that it would also include the exterior of the building or naming rights. And a lot of that comes from the history of the Bulldogs having relationships with potential sponsors. So to your earlier question about how extensive was their search, if you think of it, they had already in place relationships with First Ontario, relationships with Molson's, relationships with Pepsi, and a number of other key people that they could go to and not be starting as a cold call on the possibility of naming rights. So it's become a very different piece of pie. It's a larger piece of pie, and the way, excuse me, that they're dividing the pie is certainly different than the way it was done in the past, but it's all, excuse me, consistent with the management agreement in trying to put all of those revenue sources into the top-line hopper, if you will, of Global Spectrum, knowing that there's a different share that goes along the way.
The comments, I guess, again, my concern in regards to the agreement and what was told to us when we looked at where the revenue generating opportunities were, naming rights is one of them, it was never, ever suggested that we would build and Global Spectrum would have the right to pass through some of that revenue from what we saw was low-hanging fruit in regards to the naming rights of COPs Coliseum to a third party. So I guess my question clearly is, it was never sold to us in that way. It was if they get naming rights, there will be a flow-through, they would get a benefit, the taxpayers are going to get a benefit, and all of a sudden now we've interposed a third party into this arrangement. When, and I looked at the original documents, nowhere in the original documents did it suggest that they would even have the ability to share that third party, that revenue with a third party. So I'm trying to understand, you're suggesting there was nothing to prevent it either?
That's right.
Okay.
That's really the key, Councillor, is that it was, I'll say, broad enough that it talked about the revenue flows, but it wasn't that specific in terms of shares or not shares, if you will.
Okay, and we know that there was a competitive bid for the COPs Coliseum in regards to leasing. Was this already contemplated, that this organization was going to get a share of the naming rights?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I was on the other side of the fence at the time, so I'm not sure of the details of what was in that SMG proposal. I'd have, I have copies of it. I could, you know, certainly go back and look, but I don't.
Well, the reason I'm asking, because it just would reflect an additional revenue loss to, potentially to the city, or in the competitive nature, it would change, potentially change the financial dynamic when the decision was rendered, and I don't know if this revenue from the naming rights was suggested be part of the deal with both organizations that were bidding for the rights to have a lease at COPs Coliseum.
Yeah, I'd have to look back on that.
Fair enough. Mr. Chair, I certainly support, I mean, obviously, at the end of the day, I think the savings that has been identified by Mike Zagerk, that's, you know, the proof is in the pudding in regards to ensuring that we're getting and optimizing a return on the management. And I don't want to lose sight of that issue. I'm amassing some little issues, but at the end of the day, the bigger issue is, are we being the objectives that we set out? It appears we are, and I think ultimately, you can't not take that in serious consideration. And I really thank both First Ontario and Global Spectrum for showing and reflecting, as some of my colleagues indicated, the sensitivity in the history, the legacy of the Victor Kops name. I think that the way that you want to preserve it and even perpetuity in the context of the frontage of the COPs Coliseum is a testimony of your class, quite frankly, and your character on these issues, which is refreshing, quite frankly, when you're dealing with the corporate community. And I said this before, I mean, this wasn't about branding, this was more about processes and ensuring that we're looking after the taxpayers' interests, but at the end of the day, I'll say it again, First Ontario, you can't beat the branding in this community. It's a name of integrity, quite frankly, and certainly one that is very arsisen or corporate-minded in regards to this community, and my hat's off to everything they do and their investments and their commitment to this community and to sports. So for those reasons, I have no issue with what's before us, and I think I raised my concerns, and I think I'm quite satisfied with the responses.
Thanks, Councillor Whitehead. Councillor, I've got, just to let you know, I've got Councillor Jackson, Councillor Marula, and Councillor Clark. So, Councillor Jackson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Very much appreciate Mr. Warren and Mr. McGiffen coming forward in this joint proposal. Just two or three quick questions to John Hurtell, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and then just a couple of comments. John, I heard and listened carefully about the Kops family reaction. I just want to make sure, John, we at council here, either individually or collectively, we're not going to be in the middle of a little family spat, if you will. I listened carefully, I heard what Scott read from Sheila, I heard also that a significant member of the sister, Dr. Brenda, is not on side. So I just want to make sure overall, we as members of council, if we support this, we're just not going to be in the middle of a little family spat. Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor of Shunk, and help me with that, please.
I'll do my best. Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I think the icing on the cake, if you will, will be in the second part of the motion, and I think there's some exciting opportunities that we as a city can explore to further honor his name in a manner, and I recall some of the conversation was to try to find a very permanent memorial, if you will, in his name, one that probably wouldn't be subject to naming rights in the future.
Okay, thank you, John. That raises my comfort level on that. So, John, I guess the second question, Mr. Deputy Mayor, so unlike the Tim Hortons deal, where we can show taxpayers very publicly, very visibly, 750 grand a year, I believe, for 10 years coming to the city, I don't care who it's coming from, but it's coming to the city, 750. This sounds like that it's in the area of helping to reduce taxpayer subsidy, and maybe someday visibly, we will see dollars as well, checks to the city directly. Mr. Deputy Mayor, through to John, please, to help me with that further.
Yes, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. One way I would characterize it is that every opportunity that Global Spectrum opportunity that Global Spectrum has to add revenue streams will eventually benefit us in the city through profit sharing. The current budget, I don't think Scott would mind my saying this, their current budget for 2014 has us right on the edge of becoming or moving into that profit-sharing notion. So, with a little bit of luck and some, you know, extra concerts and, you know, ticket sales, we will be into that mode at some level. And again, as Scott said, you know, it won't be a major windfall, but given that it will be the first full year, I think that's a very positive sign. And I, of course, have watched with great interest the momentum that the booking team has made over at Global Spectrum, and the number of new acts, the volume of not only acts, but the quality of the acts, and the ticket sales are growing and growing and growing. So, it's a very positive step forward.
John, thank you for that. And so, John, I would leave it with you and Mr. Warren to best help council in terms of very honestly and sincerely marketing the message, because I know there'll be members of the community that will see the very upfront, visible Tim Hortons deal, they'll see this deal, which has tremendous financial implications positively as well for taxpayers and the corporation. But one will be a little more invisible to the average citizen, the other one was very visible. I'll leave it, John, to you and Scott Warren's good marketing and talents and skills to see what you could best do in communicating that message. Lastly, last question, Mr. Deputy Mayor, before, a couple of comments. I guess, John, this is here before us, because during the management agreement, council reserves the right to say yea or nay. Mr. Deputy Mayor, through to John?
The way that the management agreement is written, it essentially gives Global Spectrum the right to sell naming rights, specifically indicating on Cops Coliseum. And it allows for council to approve essentially the selection of the sponsor. We wanted to ensure that it met all of the city's criteria in terms of our brand, our morality, et cetera, and that's the proviso that's built into the contract.
Thanks, Sean. Mr. Deputy Mayor, just closing comments. I'll just make two comments. First of all, I've always felt about 10 years ago at Hamilton Place, I've encouraged any new corporate entity or individual that's come along that has been blessed with ways and means in life that few families or corporations have. I've always pointed to the Hamilton Place moniker and the hybrid naming of the Ronald V. Joyce Center for the Performing Arts at Hamilton Place as a wonderful hybrid that I've hoped other opportunities would allow for in other facilities in the city of Hamilton. So, I've been consistent in saying that, and I appreciate the fact that First Ontario Center will have the Victor K. Cops name still on the outside of the building and somewhere else prominently within the rank, possibly on the face-off circle of the ice rink. So, but I've always pointed to the Ronald V. Joyce one as the perfect kind of hybrid, respecting the former history and with the new dollars that the Joyce family brought to the table, recognizing that name. Lastly, Mr. Deputy Mayor, look, in our community, we're very, very lucky and fortunate to have companies like First Ontario, like Tim Hortons, that literally had their roots and foundations here in this community and grew from there. So, that's a very fortunate, wonderful thing for our city to be extremely proud of. We've got some prominent families as well, great philanthropists, just the Joyce, Brailleys, Jervinskis, and DeGrutes come to mind. But I'm going to say this as well, and again, I've been consistent publicly saying this as well. Thank you for all of these corporate and huge family wealth dollars that are being donated in our city that otherwise would leave taxpayers strapped. But I hope our society never loses fact and sight of the importance of those that didn't have ways and means financially, but like the former Mayor Cops, like the Nora Hendersons, like the Iver Winds, who just gave and sacrificed so much personally and humanly for the betterment of lives in our community, that we never, ever lose sight of those community-minded people who gave so much, and hopefully, they'll never, ever be displaced only because of corporate dollars. Thanks very much, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thanks, Councilor Jackson. Councilor Marula?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. And let me just take this opportunity to thank John Hurtell and Scott Warren. I think the presentation in itself was very simple in that I knew exactly what was going to be presented. It was just a matter of discussing its viability. And let me tell you that the HECFIE trend was consistently growing in the red or southerly for so many years. And to look at, to a maximum of $11 million, I recall, one year, and to look at where we were and where we're headed now, with actually looking at profitability in the same, and actually talking about profitability in the same sentence as HECFIE, to me, is an astounding, astounding event, and one that can't be emphasized enough. So, when we look at what was visible a few years ago, and what is visible now on the impact of our taxpayers, there's no comparison of anything that's been visibly beneficial to this community more so than the advancement of HECFIE. So, in looking at what this deal is all about, it's not so much about the deal itself with First Ontario, which, by the way, I believe has their headquarters here in Hamilton, and I applaud them for that. But it's about chipping away at that constant subsidy that was growing and growing and growing to a point of it being uncontrollable. So, this is just one more step at that, chipping away at that subsidy, and now we're actually looking at profitability. I find that to be very astounding, and I thank all of the stakeholders involved, particularly Global Spectrum. But most importantly, I would have to say that John Hurtell is a breath of fresh air, and I'm so glad that the city of Hamilton has him in our employ, and I appreciate your time.
Well said, Councilor Marula. I've got Counselor Clark, followed by the Mayor. Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I just want to stress that this is actually good news that we're experiencing today. There's a lot of hard questions to Global Spectrum on what they were doing. But the end of the day, this is really a good news story for the city. If it was so easy to get naming rights, HECFIE would have done it a long time ago. It's not so easy to get naming rights. It's a big, significant challenge to get naming rights, especially in today's economy, coming out of where we have been in the last 24 months. So, I really, my hat's off to all those involved. It shows that the private sector can actually do things that the public sector can't do, and I'm proud to see that happen. And in terms of the ongoing profit sharing, I think if we had annually a report from Global Spectrum in terms of what the profit sharing is and where the finances are, I think that would go a long way to eliminate the concerns that are being raised on, you know, what you gave to the Bulldogs, you didn't give to the Bulldogs, and what the impact is to our financial take. I feel like we're part of The Sopranos here, arguing what our take is or not, but clearly articulate what those costs were and where our profit sharing comes in. If we had that annually, I think that would really help us and the community understand exactly what this agreement is, and whether or not it's a good thing or a bad thing, and is actually showing the dividends that we thought it would. So, I'd just leave that with the city manager and Mr. Hurtell to consider coming back with that type of annual report. I think it would be helpful. I think it would be the same thing, Mr. Deputy Mayor, with our other partners there, with Carmens and et cetera, if we were doing the same thing with them. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Clark. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. As the, I think, oldest now member of this august body, I can safely say that I probably knew Mr. Cops the longest and maybe the best, because I used to go to his house for Halloween, because he gave out good stuff. And then, of course, as a broadcaster, because he was a former broadcaster, knowing him at the Miles for Millions, remember that, where he played a prominent part? Remember, he had this helmet on as he was set to go for that walk, and so many other events. And what I would say is that if you really want to honor someone forever, a stadium that's built in the last 30 years is probably not the place to do it, because that stadium has a life cycle. And we know now from our past experiences that if we do, if and when we get NHL, there'll probably be a new arena built, whether that's a temporary location or not, for all of the reasons, you know, they go out of style, we seen them blowing up the Metronome the other day and so on. And so, I just, off the top of my head, I put a list together. Charlie Ebbets, British General John Forbes, Raoul Jerry, the counselor in Montreal, Mary Kesar, in honor of her mother and father, Norm Piffles Taylor, whose stadium is still there and regina of it, it's called Mosaic Field at Taylor Field. So, and he was a First World War veteran, great hero, much beloved, and so his name is retained. But the fact is, and Mayor Joe Clark, his little stadium is next to Commonwealth Stadium. So, you don't hear much about Mayor Joe Clark anymore. And I really think that to properly honor Victor Kennedy Cops, that this is an outstanding way to continue that named relationship. And at some point, I think, and we had some discussion about this, there may be another opportunity to further fulfill that. So, the name, in fact, is not attached to a building that may come down, you know, in the next 10, 15 years. And so, I think that's the real tribute to Mr. Cops. I also want to say that this event, and I think Council Marula has touched on it, but everything we've done since moving from HECFIE has brought the most terrific people into our circle. I start with John Hurtell, who's doing such a great job. And then, of course, Kelly and all of the First Ontario people, Global Spectrum, Live Nation, the Mercanties, we have really got a powerhouse of great people who are working in a way that will add benefit to the city and to the taxpayer, if it's just the bottom line that you're looking at. And I always regret when things are said about the Bulldogs and the owner, who is another outstanding individual, who you may recall, last, a few months ago, gave $125,000 to the Dogs Breakfast Program to feed hungry kids. So, I really think we should cherish him rather than cast any doubts as to his presence and his contributions to our city. So, all in all, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I think this is a great day. I know there will be some good discussion, fair enough, that's the kind of things we have to do is make tough decisions. But I know that Victor Kennedy Cops' legacy will be much better captured in other ways, and we will have an outstanding First Ontario name on our Cops Coliseum. So, thank you very much.
Well said, Mr. Mayor. So, the motion's on the floor, moved and seconded, all in favor? Carried. Great. Thanks very much. Okay, Carolyn, I think we're pretty much done for today, are we not? Just checking in with you to make sure, I guess I missed anything? Oh, yes, just the Bugs Bunny thing at the end there. Right, got it. Okay, well, motion to adjourn then, Council of all, and Jackson, all in favor? Carried. Thanks, everyone.